All right. Lynn, why don't you start us off with a roll call?
Okay, Lynn Heath.
Bill Schnaber.
Brian Lindback.
Gary Israel.
Alex Zarchin.
Eric Peterson.
All right. And this is, of course, our April 17th Planning Commission and Board of Zoning Appeals. We do have items for both. With that, we do have some minutes from March 20th. And if anybody would care to review those and so entertain.
Mr. Chairman, I have reviewed them and moved that we approve minutes from March 20th, 2018.
I'd second it.
Well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And one abstention. And we have our potential residential development report. As far as staff communications, it's like we had a couple of building permits shown here to date. Imagine there may be a few more since then? Or is this about right?
I think the report's correct.
Okay.
Single-family permits have been really slow to start this spring.
We've got four over in Cornerstone, looks like, four duplexes. Six overall. Any questions with staff? Seeing...
None here.
Seeing none. Anything else need to know?
I just got a message that your applicant for the two cases tonight is running a little bit late, so you might consider rearranging your agenda and starting at the bottom if he...
Is this him here, Les?
If he doesn't make it on time.
Okay. Well, I would motion that we take our Planning Commission items first, which is item number seven, if everybody's okay with that.
Sure.
Yep.
Yes, me.
Yep, we have a motion and a...
I'll second that motion.
And a second. Yep. And all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. This is item number seven on your agenda. It is a Butler County conditional use permit for a solar farm. And this is in the northwest corner of the southwest 140th and Butler Road. Butler, this is not in Andover's city limits, but it is in Butler County's, and so that's why we're looking at it. It's in our jurisdiction area. So Butler County has asked that we provide some input on the proposed solar-electric farm adjacent to the south end of our extraterritorial planning jurisdiction area. And I think there's some aerial photos attached of the site. And if... I'll let Les maybe shed any more light on what you might know.
I think that pretty well summarizes it. This is not in our extraterritorial jurisdiction. It's adjacent to. The north end of this site is on the line between our jurisdiction and the city of Rose Hill. But out of courtesy, the county zoning administrator sent me a copy of the application and thought it would be best if we had some input early on before it goes to public hearing over there at El Dorado.
And we certainly do appreciate this early warning and early notice of any activities in and about Andover. So you guys received a letter from Butler County. Tells a little about what they're doing.
Yep.
Presume you had a chance to review that. They also provided us a site plan. I think one thing that stands out to me is that it's not right up against Butler Road.
Right.
That it's a half mile, well, it looks like actually a quarter mile.
Quarter mile, yeah.
A quarter of a mile west of the lines. So I think that's good. It appears that there are plans to put in a tree row. And I don't know if that is a... If they're making that a requirement or not. It seems like if it's on a site plan, maybe that's the intent.
This is what was submitted to the county with the application, so...
So...
We don't know any more details.
But I think it'd be good to make a recommendation that they do follow that site plan with regards to some kind of screening, even though it's long, long out into the future when your development of Andover moves out here. But I think it'd be good from a screening standpoint.
Do we know the height of the communication tower? That's listed there?
What you see is...
Yeah.
What we've got.
And have light on it, so.
Looks like by the positioning of it, it's about 170 feet tall is what my guess would be. You know, just given the proximity to the...
To the building.
Property lines and such. So that's an assumption.
I saw that it was... I drove out and looked at it, and I saw the substation to the north. But there was reference that they didn't know if they were going to tie into that or not. I recognize this as a silly question, but if they don't tie into that one, where do they tie into? Do we know?
That's a good question.
Okay.
I know that's their substation, and it would only make logical sense that they tie in at that point.
Do we know? It looks like maybe Nice owns both sides of this property, that... Or Kemp Co.
That's what I'm picking up from their survey.
And certainly, they've advertised out to the thousand feet of the surrounding property owners for their case, not necessarily for our case.
Correct. Again, this is just a courtesy, so there are no notifications for us.
Right. I guess, you know, one thought I was wondering about is if they'll have... I see there's another communication tower just to the west of here and...
Is that a cell?
Looks like a cell tower, maybe. But I wonder if they'll pave this road, or you heard nothing of that either, I presume?
Probably wouldn't increase your traffic that much.
What you're seeing there may be a water tower.
Oh, is that a tower, water tower?
No, not the one. It's too thin for that.
Yeah, I looked on Google Maps.
That's what I was trying to...
And it shows as a cell tower.
Is that what it's... Because it's real thin.
Oh, the water tower is a mile north of there. That's right, it's on 130th.
What is that?
There's a water tower on 130th. Straight north of that site.
And do we have any idea how tall the structure's going to be at all?
Here you went.
Yeah, I know.
You have what I have.
Okay.
You know what I know.
So we're just guessing. It's two miles tall and... So they can get closer to the sun, and everybody will see it.
You don't happen to know if they're leasing it? Nope. Okay. All right. Well, it seems we have more questions than answers with this case.
Well, we don't have to make a decision. We just acknowledge, isn't it?
Acknowledge it, make any comments you see fit. I think you're right on point that it does need to be screened at ground level.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think that would be my main thing. I know you can't screen 120-foot or 170-foot tall tower. But I would think the perimeter screening would be beneficial to the surrounding properties.
Especially for any glares or anything like that?
Yeah. Yep. Certainly, they probably wouldn't be looking to put in tall trees, I wouldn't think.
Right.
But cedar windbreak slash screening would be appropriate, so... Those would be, I mean, are my minimum recommendation. And beyond that, I mean, I think we'd be just making some assumptions of... From the material we've got here before us. If we wanted to recommend anything beyond that.
Or just take notes?
They hear the first of May was the date? It's in that letter. May 1, yes. So we can share those thoughts with the county and tell them it's a little bit hard for us to get our arms around when we don't have any details.
But they got all those trees there, so that's probably just screening.
Yeah. That's their proposal.
Yeah, I think that would be our recommendation, is that they make that a requirement to the conditions of the permit for the solar farm. So that they could be better neighbors than they might otherwise be. Any other comments or questions?
That would only be a thousand-foot notice requirement, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I think it'd be good for us to motion a recommendation. You know, I don't know that we have to say that we are in favor of the plan, but just that any conditions that we would recommend. And I think that's kind of what Les is alluding to as well, right?
Yes.
Agreement?
So...
Mm-hmm. I'd agree.
If anybody would want to make that motion. I'll go ahead and make the motion. I would recommend to the Butler County Commission that the screening that's shown on the plan, that's been provided to us in our packet tonight, be implemented as a condition of the approval of the conditional permit. Any other things I'm missing for our discussion?
No requirements on types of trees to screen? Or a combination?
I think it would be appropriate there evergreen screen, screening tree, maybe of a cedar type. But I would include that in my motion as that it'd be an evergreen screening.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by myself, Brian Lindback, and a second by Lynn Heath. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes to our recommendation.
The only other thing is, I don't mind if it's you or me, but I think somebody should ask them to contact Flint Hills and make sure they know what's going on and give them an idea. The last thing I want is one of those guys calling us up and saying, "Why don't you tell us?" I don't think they would say anything, but we've got a multimillion dollar golf club down there and they don't know what they're going to be picking about.
About a mile away, or how far?
Nearly a mile.
Yeah, it's a mile to the north and east. Yep.
Could be a wind turbine, though.
It could be a wind turbine. All right. With that item, I think we'd look to get back on agenda. We do have a zoning hearing before we get to a BZA case, and that's item number five. This is a public hearing on an application for a change in zoning district classification from the present R2 to a residential district R3 multifamily residential. It's located at 401 West Mike Street, Andover, Kansas. The applicant desires to change the zoning from a legal nonconforming... I'm sorry. From change the zoning district in order to demolish an existing structure and to build a two-family residence. The lot is a legal nonconforming for an existing R2 single-family residential zone, but would like to also require variance of the required minimum lot size to allow for R3 zone. And staff knows no reason not to approve this request, pending in the outcome of the public hearing, and a condition, also conditioned on a dedication of a 30-foot half-street right-of-way. And as we all know, the next item is also associated with that, this zoning item, so...
Me, yes.
Is the applicant here tonight on this case? Okay, good. First, we'll hear from staff, and then we'll call the applicant up to provide any extra testimony. But go for it.
I think you've pretty well summarized, Brian. The lot is an existing legal nonconformance in the R2 zone on Mike Street, which was a few years ago upgraded to curb and gutter with storm sewer. There is a multifamily project across the street, the Sharp project that this commission approved about three years ago.
Yep.
As you said, the next item on the agenda would be a variance, should this zoning be approved, to allow the two-family structure on a lot that's a few thousand feet short of the minimum for the district. I would add that in our new UDM, we are suggesting that those minimum lot sizes are reduced.
Good.
Pretty much across the board, anyway, so this is a little closer to in line with what we're proposing as the new standards.
Okay, that's also good news.
Yeah.
Yep, we're in keeping with the new standards with what we may be doing tonight.
Are those determined at this point, Les, the new?
They're in the draft stage.
Okay.
Maybe the applicant can share some information on this, but it looks like there's some fairly close setbacks with the adjoining structure there. Is that... Do you know anything about that, Les?
I don't know the exact dimensions. You know, those aerial photos are...
Right.
Plus or minus a few feet.
Correct. But presuming it's maybe our standard's eight-foot side setback. It looks like it might be closer than eight, but who knows? If that's indeed the case.
Right.
Of course, and then it is existing, so it's an existing legal nonconforming structure.
There are many nonconformances in that neighborhood.
Sure.
It's been around everywhere.
You may require that... This is called Hodges subdivision, but it's actually just a plat of survey. And most of the ownerships don't line up with the parcels that were created.
Well, I think if it'd be appropriate, maybe if it would be good to have a replat of this, is that... Would that be something that would be good for the records?
That is a consideration.
Okay.
If you remember, we did ask for a replat of the Sharp property across the street, but that was kind of an agglomeration of a few lots and different ownerships.
And this is not an addition to the existing? It's a demolition of the existing?
Correct.
I think, I mean, me personally, I think for the orderly development of this community, if there's an area that has not been plotted, and there's some concerns as far as ownership boundaries and such, it would be a good practice to be involved in as far as requiring a plat. I don't think you were asking for much on this case, because certainly they'll have to survey the property for any new buildings that would go up. But I think it would be a good thing, and it appears that they already have engaged GoDecky, who does surveying and has already signed a document here showing a boundary. So I do think it would be good, as a matter of rule, to go ahead and request that be a requirement of our approvals. And that dedication could be done with the plat at that time. Les, I presume there's... All the utilities are accounted for in the front street? There's sewer and water in the front?
Sewer, water, electric, gas, cable television, they're all there. You'll remember the old Andover water tower used to be just catty-cornered across the street from this property.
Yep. While we're looking at this and discussing with staff, I'll bring up a few housekeeping items. This case is case number Z 2018-01. This is, like we said, a rezoning for the single-family to R3 multifamily. Maybe just ask that... Are there any disqualifications from any members of the committee?
Not here.
Okay.
No.
And this case was advertised in the Butler County Times Gazette on March 24, 2018, and notices were mailed to the applicant, as well as 16 real property owners of record in the area of notification on March 21, 2018. And I'll declare that 20 days has elapsed from that. And unless anybody's here, it doesn't look like anybody else is here to contest that. So I'll declare that proper notice has been given. And I presume there's no ex parte communication with anybody outside?
No.
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 All right, that's good. If there's no other questions of staff on this, I'll go ahead and ask the applicant to, you know, come forward and state your name and address, and if there's any questions or concerns as to what we've mentioned here already.
My name is Mike Austin, and I live here in Andover. 602 West Edgemont Court, Cedar Park. And I just seen that property as a potential improvement place for, you know, for duplex. It just seems like it fit the neighborhood, you know, for improvements.
Okay. And did you have any concerns about the required dedication or possible replat?
Nah, I don't think so. I'm fine with that.
Okay. Any other questions of the applicant?
No.
I do have one quick question. So is it a removal of all existing property on their structures? Because I saw, was it a shed?
Yeah, that's going to go away as well.
Okay. Because I was going to say, because like on this one, it still had that listed on that property map, but it was overlapping.
Sure.
Okay. So all of it is going to be cleared?
Is the metal storage bin yours?
Yeah, it's getting ready to get up here as well, so.
I have a question for you, Mike. Shows on this one drawing right here. It's on the front here.
Mm-hmm.
There's a little sketch of the duplex with a garage in front, and it says... It's a 1,200-square-foot duplex per side with a single-car garage between.
Yeah, and that's just...
One-car garage or a garage for each side, but it's one structure?
Yes. In theory, it's a single-car garage for each one, but my... The 1,200 square foot is... I wasn't subject to my square footage available versus floor plans available. But my intentions is to build approximately 1,200 square foot with each place having a garage between the two of them, so.
Do you have an estimation of what the bedroom numbers are going to be?
Uh, yeah, I can't imagine building if it ain't a three-bedroom. Probably a three-bedroom, one and a half bath, maybe two bath. I don't have intentions of putting a basement in it, but... I don't know, that's kind of up for planning, I guess. I'm not sure of my funding and my budgeting. And I'm going to use YouBuildIt to do it. But before I can get my costing from them, I needed to figure out whether or not I can do this or not, so. I've got funding in place. I just don't know exactly what it's going to be. But I want to build it very similar to the apartment complex across the street, you know? That caliber of quality, so.
And do the... Does the building across the street, does it have a basement?
Nah, it's apartments.
Apartments?
Yeah.
There are no basements in it?
No. And I might put a basement in it. I don't... Again, I'm just going to kind of look at the costing and what's involved and things, so.
Les, when he went back through and plotted this, presuming that's the direction we go, if he wanted to split the lot in half and set the common line on the two... On the common line of the duplex, does that present another issue? If he were to have a duplex? I'm thinking about like some of the other things over at some of the other duplexes and triplexes that where they've split that after the fact.
Not so long as it meets the requirements of the variance.
Uh-huh. So we may have it. You might get the mic a little closer to you. There we go.
The variance would allow for the smaller overall size that could be split down into two parcels on one lot with a lot split.
I guess...
Of course, as it was built, it would have to be built in such a manner that it was ready to lot split. Independent utilities.
Right.
And the correct construction of the party wall.
I think the main thing I wanted to let you know is that if you did want to go that route, you'd need to kind of plan for that in advance.
Yeah, I get it.
So... But at this point, it's just one single lot is what you're looking to do?
Yeah, I hadn't thought about that. That's actually a good thought, so I may look into that.
All right. Any other questions of the applicant? If not, let him have a seat.
Nope. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mike.
Well, with that, we have any deliberation, any concerns?
I think this is a good area for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would agree. And...
Is anything different that we want to put down that's not already listed or just approved as requested?
I think...
I know we got a little note here, huh?
Yeah, the thing I was thinking, we would just require that they replat as a condition to this zone change. That would... And with that replat, they can address the dedication of any such easements needed or right-of-ways. That the approval would be conditioned upon a reapproval of a replat that includes a dedication, so.
Talking about the Board of Zoning Appeals, or this?
This.
Okay.
That this would be... We would approve it, but with the conditions that a replat would come through and straighten up any boundary issues and dedications. All right. And the applicant didn't have any issues with that, so that seems a non-issue. So we do have a bit of a report to go through here. So if everybody has their findings and factors, unless there's anything else that we want to go talk about in advance of this, should be 17 of them. Okay. Anyone want to volunteer to read all these, or I can go through them?
Bill volunteered earlier this evening.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. These are factors and findings. One, what are the existing uses and their character and condition on the subject property and in the surrounding neighborhood? Notation here, see adjacent existing land uses on page 1 of 4.
I think there's a R3 across the street and with multifamily. So yes, yes, there's...
I propose an agreement, yes?
There's some existing uses there.
Number two, what is the current zoning of the subject property and that of the surrounding neighborhood in relationship to the requested change? Again, see adjacent zoning on page 1 of 4. Be the same, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Three, is the length of time that the subject property has remained undeveloped or vacant as zoned a factor in the consideration?
In a?
No?
No.
I don't think so.
Number four, would the request correct in error in the application of these regulations? No.
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 Number five, is the request caused by changed or changing conditions in the area of the subject property? And if so, what is the nature and significance of such change or changing conditions? Staff, yes, properties in the area are being upgraded and rehabilitated with many of the properties being changed to higher density multifamily uses.
I concur.
Yes.
Yes. There's a pattern.
Six, do adequate sewage disposal and water supply and all other necessary public facilities, including street access, exist? Or can they be provided to serve the uses that would be permitted on the subject property? Staff, yes?
Already concurred.
Yes.
Seven, would the subject property need to be platted or replatted in lieu of dedications made for rights of way, easements, access control, or building setback lines? Staff, dedication of the required thirty-foot half-street right-of-way in lieu of plating. I concur, or no, I'm sorry.
I think we can achieve either, either which way, but, uh, I think plating would be good to follow in with subdivision regs and such.
Okay. Eight, would a screening plan be necessary for existing and/or potential uses of the subject property? No?
No.
Nine, are suitable vacant lands or buildings available, or not available, for development that currently has the same zoning as is requested? None are available in the area? No?
No.
Agreed.
Ten, if the request is for business or industrial uses, are such uses needed to provide more services or employment opportunities?
Not applicable.
Applicable.
Yeah.
Eleven, is the subject property suitable for the current zoning to which it has been restricted?
Yes.
Yes.
Twelve, to what extent would, would removal of the restrictions, i.e. the approval of the zoning request detrimentally affect other property in the neighborhood? No detriment is perceived?
Nope.
Agree?
No one telling us that either, but that look like.
Thirteen, would the request be consistent with the purpose of the zoning district classification and the intent and purpose of these regulations?
Yes.
Yes.
Fourteen, is the request in conformance with the comprehensive plan and does it further enhance the implementation of the plan?
Concur?
Yes.
Yes.
Fifteen, what is the nature of the support or opposition to the request? None at this time?
Correct.
Sixteen, are there any informational materials or recommendations available from knowledgeable persons or experts which would be helpful in its evaluation? Staff, approval of the requested change subject to dedication of the required thirty-foot half-street right-of-way in lieu of plating. Concur?
But we wanna include that plating.
Yeah, right. Just include that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And seventeen, by comparison, does the relative gain to the public health, safety, and general welfare outweigh the loss in property value or the hardship imposed upon the applicant by not approving the request? I don't see the connection.
In this case.
I don't, I don't see major detriment up or down.
No.
No.
Positive, I think.
Okay. So-
We're gonna base this on findings, number-
I picked out a few of them. If you guys all think they tend to agree, number two, number five, number thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, they're all support approval. So, two, five, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, I'm sorry, thirteen, fourteen.
And fifteen?
Yeah, fifteen as well.
These are not modified, correct?
I think we are looking to modify the request in, in that it would be a replating.
Right.
Yeah, seven and that other one. Looking for it now.
So we're looking for a motion at this point?
Seven, sixteen, I want that, uh, for replat. Okay, do we need to make a note of that in there or?
Think just that we need to approve-
Modified and approved.
Subject to the replating of the property and, and, uh, required dedication.
Recommended. Having considered the evidence at the hearing and the factors to evaluate the application, I, William Schnaber, move that we recommend to the governing body that case number Z two zero one eight dash zero one be modified and approved to change the zoning district classification from the R two single-family residential district to the R three multiple-family residential district based on the findings two, five, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen of the Plating Commission as recorded in the summary of this hearing, and that the following modifications be attached to this recommendation, that, uh, subject to replating and dedication. Well, second it.
We have a motion and a second. And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right. Just one last little housekeeping item. This case, uh, is planned to go before, uh, city council. Uh, and if there's a, uh, protests, uh, someone can file protest petition, fourteen days, um, you know, after tonight, so that would be May first, twenty-eighteen at four-thirty. If there are property areas signed and notarized with a proper protest petition and accurate legal description from owners of record of twenty percent or more of real property, uh, proposed to be rezoned, or the owners of record of twenty percent or more of the total real property within the official area of notification, both inside and outsides of the limit, limits, uh, not including the street right-of-way, then such change shall not be passed without a three-fourths, um, vote by the governing body. And that's as per our regulations, section eleven, one oh-three. So again, this will go to the governing body on May eighth, twenty-eighteen at seven PM here in this room. And our next item of business.
I'll make a motion, we recessed, the Plating Commission can be aborted zoning appeals.
Second a motion.
We have a motion by Lynn and, uh, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are on the Board of Zoning Appeals agenda now, and this is item number six of our agenda. This is BZA V twenty-eighteen dash zero two. It's a public hearing on an application filed by JLA Investments LLC requesting a variance from the required ten thousand square foot minimum lot area of twenty-two hundred square feet to allow construction of a two-family residential dwelling on a seventy-eight hundred square foot lot located at four oh-one West Mike, the same subject property we just reviewed. Um, again, this subject property is a legal non-conforming nine thousand square foot lot in its current R two single-family residential zoning district. And with the change of zoning district to R three multifamily, a ten thousand square foot lot is required. The zoning change, if approved, with the conditions to dedicate right-of-way, would reduce the lot size from the existing nine thousand square foot down to seventy hundred square feet. And staff knows no reason not to approve the requested variance pending the outcome of our proceedings and several other. There's several other non-conforming, uh, lots in this area, as Les mentioned earlier, so. I presume, but I'll do for the record, that there again has been no ex parte communication on this item, and there's maybe no reason to disqualify yourself from this item. Is that it?
Correct.
Okay.
None here.
Presumptions are assumed here, but good to confirm. All right. So again, this, this case was also notified in the Butler County Times Gazette on March twenty-fourth, and notices were mailed to the applicant and sixteen owners of record in the area of notification on March twenty-first, twenty-eighteen. The record shows that twenty days has elapsed from the publication, and therefore I'll, I'll declare that proper notification has been given. All right. So does everybody understand kinda the, the situation here?
Yeah.
We're changing the zoning and it's-
I'm just, I guess I'm just a little miss here on the nine thousand to seventy-eight hundred.
Well, we're gonna have the, with the plating requirement that we just approved, uh, he'll be dedicating or giving part of his, his ownership to the city.
Thirty, that's thirty feet.
The thirty feet.
Okay.
Because that property wasn't plotted before, it was just kind of a, a street that was there and there wasn't proper right-of-way for that street, uh, per our current standards. And so once he does dedicate that right-of-way, it'll be even smaller, less than the nine thousand. It'll go down to a seventy-eight hundred square feet lot, square foot lot. And so that would, that's the reason why we're having to do a variance for this, is it's just a little bit smaller lot than what we presently allow, but it sounds as though more than likely with our new code that we're gonna be adopting here sooner than later, that these sort of standards would be amenable.
Yeah, it would be, either be fine or much closer than we currently are, much closer.
Correct. And it's, it's an existing structure that's non-conforming and, and I think just development over time in this older part of town was just, that's just the nature of how things went back then.
Even at seventy-eight hundred square feet, it's not the smallest lot in the neighborhood.
Okay. Yeah.
And it's not like that land is completely gone, right?
No.
It'll still visibly be there.
And I, I think it's important to, to distinguish that he's making improvement to the area.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
That it's, and I don't think, that it's not like he's trying to put a, an apartment complex on it that doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood. It's, it's a duplex and is in keeping with what's in the vicinity there, so. I think for those reasons, it's, it's a good, a good, uh, reason to approve a, something that's just a little bit out of our, uh, what we'd normally allow. Any questions of staff on the, the variance? Merits?
No.
No.
I don't know that we need to hear from the applicant unless he wants to, okay, okay, very well. With that in mind-
This is more of a city thing.
It's a code, yeah, we're certainly, um, going to a substandard, uh, code than what was presently allowed, so.
A little bit, yeah, well.
I think that's a good, a good segue to, let's go through our, uh, does this evidence demonstrate that? We have four items there. Number one, that the particular physical surroundings, shape, and topographical condition of the specific property involved would result in a practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship upon the owner, leasing, or occupant, uh, as designated as a mere inconvenience if these provisions were literally enforced. I think if, yes, because it's a existing non-conforming nine thousand square foot lot, uh, and it would further reduce the area because of the required dedication of a thirty-foot half-street right-of-way.
Concur.
And two, the request for the variance is not based exclusively, exclusively on the desire of the owner or leasing or occupant or applicant to make more money out of the property. I think for the same reasons, because the existing non-conforming nine thousand square foot lot would further, uh, would further be reduced by the required dedication and-
Concur.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And the granting of variance will not be materially detrimental or injurious, injurious to other properties or improvements in the neighborhood and which subject property is located. And I think we discussed that, you know, many other properties in the area are legal non-conforming lots and, uh, sounds like this isn't the smallest of, of them. So I think it would be in character with the neighborhood with this variance. And might be a little bit bold to say that, but I think that it probably would. The proposed variance will not impair inadequate supply of light or air to the adjacent property, substantially increase congestion of public streets or roads, or increase the danger of fire or endanger public safety, or substantially diminish or impair the property values within the neighborhood. And I think because, uh, the setbacks can be achieved and, and certainly this case will be brought back to us as a plat and we can review things a little bit further then.
Concur.
Yes.
Yes.
So, we're, I think we all agree that, uh, this demonstrates that we can take these conditions and apply a variance to it. So let's look at the specific conditions to be met. That the variance requested arises from such conditions, which is unique to the property in question, and which is not ordinarily found in the same zoning district and, and is not created by an action or act, inaction, I'm sorry, actions of the property owner or the applicant. I think this is just a unique situation where we have a, uh, a lot that's non-conforming and, and by the time we dedicate this right-of-way, it's gonna be even more non-conforming. So I think that's a reason to allow this variance.
I agree?
Yep.
I agree.
And two, that the granting of this variance will not adversely affect the rights of adjacent property owners or residents. And I agree that we'll have setbacks in place and, and I don't, it doesn't appear that we'll have any issues there. And number three, the strict application of these provisions and these regulations from which the variance is requested will not constitute unnecessary hardship upon the property owner representing the application. I think because the existing non-conforming nine thousand square foot lot would be further reduced in area because of the required dedication of thirty-foot half-street right-of-way.
Yes.
And number four, that the variance desired will not adversely affect the public health, safety, morals, or order, convenience, prosperity, or general welfare, uh, because there's gonna be adequate setbacks and adequate dedications.
I agree.
Yes.
Agree.
And, okay, and that the granting of variance, uh, desired will not be opposed in the general spirit and intent of these regulations because there is an adequate setback in dedications and I think we already discussed that it is in keeping with what's going on in that part of our town.
Concur.
Agree.
Okay.
Yes.
With that, look for a, a motion, either as approved or requested or modified. Unless there's further deliberation.
I'm looking for the motion here.
Find a sample motion in there?
Yep.
Okay.
Having considered evidence of the hearing and determined that the findings, uh, facts in the variant reports have been found to exist that support all five of the conditions set out in section ten, one oh-seven D one of the zoning regulation and KSA twelve, seven, five, nine, E of the state statute, which are necessary for granting a variance, I, Lynn Heath, move that the chairperson be authorized to sign the resolution granting the variance for case number BZA V twenty, two thousand eighteen dash oh-two, as requested, subject to the conditions listed. And I think they listed about everything there.
Yeah, certainly.
Biggest one was, uh, seventy-eight and, uh-
Biggest one was, uh, seventy-eight and, uh, thirty-foot setback.
Mm-hmm. And so we have a, a motion by Lynn Heath.
Second.
And, and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And motion passes unanimously. Okay. Thank you, sir. That just about does it for tonight. Oh, yes, there's some closing remarks, I'm reminded, almost forgot that. Uh, this case will go to, uh, well, this is the, the last, that this case will be heard unless you've, uh, are aggrieved by this decision. And in that scenario, you would need to, uh, make, I'm losing my spot here. Okay, I'm sorry here, if anybody is agreed by this decision, a further appeal can be made to district court. I knew I had district court in there. To be determined, um, if it's reasonable, this is within thirty days after the resolution is signed and filed with the zoning administrator and presumably that'll be very soon. So you have thirty days till, till you can take this to district court if you're not in favor of it. All right, that closes that item.
I make a motion, we adjourn the border zoning appeals and reconvene the planning commission, so we can close.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Any member items?
Not I.
Not here.
No.
Nope.
Nope. I just noticed that, uh, a lot of these concerts have been announced, uh, I saw on the website. So I think, uh, a lot, a lot of neat new concerts coming to our neat, neat new amphitheater.
Yeah. I think there's what, one still to be announced?
Yes, the August Act hasn't been announced yet, and we got some really good press in the Wichita Eagle today and-
Fantastic.
We're hoping to get the same from the Wichita Business Journal.
Great.
Good.
Yep. That's exciting. All right. Well, looking to adjourn this meeting.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Gary.
I second the motion.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right.
Thank you.